Thank you for being here.
Glad to be here. If we could, let's just all first just start off with a prayer for those people in Tennessee that unfortunately have been hit with that tornado and if we can. Lord, I just thank you that right now that you just have your hand upon all of those that were affected by the tornado, have your hand upon all of the first responders and those that are coming to their aid. Lord, we're so thankful for the wonderful, incredible, beautiful place that we live and the things that we can do here and the way that you've watched over us even with the storms that have come through here. So, Lord, I thank you tonight that you will just guide and direct those who are here to serve us and our officials that are going to make the right decisions for all the things that need to be done. Lord, guide them and direct them in the things that they need to do. Give us peace and wisdom of what we need to do and have your hand upon each and everything that we do, for we just bring it all to you and we'll give it up to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Gibson, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Present.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Okay, great. Welcome, everybody. We've got a lot of folks here tonight. We're going to start with public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Good evening.
Good evening. Can I move this keyboard up?
I think so.
Okay. I'd like to speak on Items A and B of the consent agenda. I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but it seems to me like both items are for someone to study what needs to be done, then supervise the work. Neither one seems to likely include any actual construction. If I'm wrong, my bad. But it looks like we're going to pay Wright Construction about $40,000 to oversee a construction project. I thought that's why you hired a contractor. And I see a project assistant is billed at $78 an hour. Little joke, if I wasn't retired, I'd go apply. And then there's $83,000 for Matern Professional Engineering, which looks like it may be on top of $67,000 that they've already billed for a total of $151,000. And this seems for design and oversight. Again, maybe I didn't read the motion correctly, but if so, wouldn't it be prudent to see how much this building is worth? Just ask CBRE, then decide if it makes sense to take that money plus the $8 million that has to be used for community development. I think that's true. And use it to build a city hall that will work for employees and citizens. One other item, I'd like to see the council discuss a resolution that goes something like this. Since it is clear that a political action committee, in this case, the Southwest Florida Jobs Alliance, has contributed money toward the election of two of the candidates running, and since all candidates have declared that they agree that expenditures, funding and expenditures should be accessible on the city of Bonita Springs website, let it be resolved that this council insists that all donors and expenditures on behalf of any candidate for city office be reported clearly, completely, and accurately in a timely manner. This would include donors and expenditures by any candidate and any political action committee that supports the candidate for this election and any future elections. I'm sure Mr. Rooney can probably work up a resolution tonight. It may be.
Thank you for your comments. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Hello, Kathy.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath. My first comment is on the consent agenda, Item F. This is another no-brainer. I think every year I say the same thing. It is the caretaker's agreement with Jason Jacarino at the Bonita Nature Place. I think you all know that I was involved with the nature place 10 years ago before the city took it over. And I can tell you, Jason has done such a great job out there. So, like I said, it's a no-brainer. And just a few short comments now. I guess I could wait. It is 10B on the food trucks now. I know public comment is allowed. Would you rather I wait till then to make a few? I don't have much to say. Would you want me to do it now?
Sure.
Oh, do it now, okay.
Do it now and later if you'd like.
Well, I don't have that much to say. The last time I said, it's basic, I feel the same way. I don't feel I'm that qualified to make judgment on what you should or should not do. I just said, I don't envy you, but please, I know there has to be changes made. Please carefully consider it. And the only major suggestion I have is I feel it's important that you hold off the vote, any vote on it, until you have a full council. Let's face it, we're going to have two more council members very, very soon. And I think it really should have a full council to make the decision. So, that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Hey, Al.
Hi, counsel. Seth. My name is Al Greenwood, and my family owns the Buffalo Chips Restaurant in downtown Bonita. And I'm here to talk about the hot dog carts on the Old 41 redevelopment area. Some of you staff and members don't know how long I've been involved in redevelopment of Old 41. In 1992, Lee County started its first redevelopment project. I was part of that committee, and I was also an officer of that committee. And I got a letter from Ray Judah and the council commissioner thanking me for my 10 years of service. When we first become a city in Bonita Springs, Mayor Paul Pass gave me the city flag to take to Brustod, Germany, our sister city, that we represent Bonita Springs. And I went as an ambassador and gave them our city flag to their city council, Verdermaeser. The Chamber of Commerce awarded me a distinction of being their ambassador emeritus. I think I'm the only one from the Chamber of Commerce. I have a letter from the then-Governor Scott and Senator Nelson thanking me for my long service to the city of Bonita Springs. I also am a member of the Bonita Springs Alliance Club for 30 years, and I will be president again for the third time. I'm a 32nd degree Mason and a Shriner. Now you know who I am and how dedicated I am to the Old 41 thing. In today's news press, there's an article by Leonard Pitts that he wrote a eulogy that concerns the federal government's competency in handling the coronavirus. He wasn't happy with the way they're doing it. I want to tell this council and staff, we have a virus coming to Bonita Springs, and it's coming to Old 41, and it's called hot dog carts. It's a virus. We spent millions of dollars to upgrade and improve this area, and now you're going to allow hot dog carts all up and down it. You could put one at the dog track, right at the corner of Old 41 and Beach Road. They can put many hot dog cart parks in there. They could put vans. They could put drink carts. They can do a lot, and it's permanent. It's 365 days a year. A second location, the pearl of our downtown business redevelopment is Everglades Wonder Gardens. Right across the street from it is an empty lot owned by the city. If this council votes to allow hot dog carts on Old 41, they'll probably allow some lobbyists to put in hot dog carts right across the street from this pearl, this jewel of our downtown. Also, on the north end, one and a half blocks from Buffalo Chips, is Nelson's Plaza, a perfect spot for hot dog carts. So I'm here to request that this council does not allow this thing. You've added with this new thing that you just wrote on Monday night that is a memorandum that stated three times, you can't have hot dog carts on Little Hickory Island. And it also mentioned one time that you can't have them in sensitive redevelopment areas. We only have one redevelopment area, and it's sensitive to me and other business owners. We do not want hot dog carts up and down our redevelopment area. And I want to stress to this council that please add into this, if you're going to pass this resolution where it says sensitive redevelopment area, actually, put in the words, "Old 41 redevelopment quarter." You say sensitive redevelopment, we're the only one. So I'm asking you. Tell the staff, just add that. And I thank you for your concerns, and I hope you are confident in this voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Thanks for being here tonight. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. John, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. It's good to see you all. Thank you so much for everything you do for us. It always seems like we're up here doing, you're doing, having hard decisions. Tonight, I'm going to address three items on the sheet. One is for 6E, the artist cabins in Riverside Park. And I just want to say that the present person in those cabinets has brought and attracted many people to the park regularly and quite frankly is an asset to that little artist village. And the longer you can keep them there, the better. That's all I have to say on that issue. On Item 6F, the caretaker, Jason has done a tremendous job working in the park. He's been responsive to us all the time when we have issues down in the park. The nature place is always a great place. We send people to go up and walk and check it out. So just want to support Jason. And the third item, as Kathy spoke and Al spoke earlier, Item 9B on the food trucks, I just ask you to consider some things. First, I guess I ought to identify myself. I didn't. I'm John Pano with the Bonita Springs Downtown Alliance. As far as the food trucks are concerned, just, I would really like you to consider the property owners down there and their rights to have events and do things in their parking lots, have food events in their parking lots, and not restrict them from being able to do that. Secondly, if you do allow a food truck park downtown, you need to consider the menus. You don't want to have food truck parks selling pizza, tacos, fried chicken, hamburgers, and subs right across from our brick and mortar stores that are already selling those things. It just, it would defeat our purpose of trying to bring variety to downtown. We also should consider the impact that would have on attracting other brick and mortar restaurants to the area. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move along to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your preference?
Pull E.
Second.
Pull E? Okay, we're going to pull E. And then because there had been some questions, I guess I will pull A. I think, motion to approve the rest?
Second.
Okay, I want to make sure here. I'm just double checking with B.
I think they're similar.
Why don't I pull A and B?
Yeah, I think you talked about A.
Yeah, right. So let's pull A and B for discussion and, I'm sorry, motion to approve the rest other than A and B and E?
Oh, move.
Okay. And a second. Okay, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, Item A, accept a proposal from Wright Construction Group for Station, or STA number two to the construction manager at risk continuing services agreement on the amount not to exceed $39,869 for pre-construction services for city hall renovations and remodel. And this is green sheet number 20-03055. Team, who can shed some light on this, please?
So, Mayor, this is a contract we already have existing through the process of RFPs. They're one of our existing contractors. So as you all are aware, we have had air conditioning issues, and the air conditioning is becoming at end of life. At the same time, we have roofing issues, and the roof warranty is about to expire as well. We're looking at, we had planned out in out years in the CIP to take these as separate issues, but in cost effectiveness, if you have the contractor here at the same time, we would be saving money in that opportunity. We know that we have placed several Band-Aids on the current air conditioning system. What we are looking to do is continue to have the design plans and the permitting in place, and the actual contract with Wright allows them to have subcontractors underneath them. They will do a reach out to local contractors to assist with that. But also, in the same time, as part of B, we're continuing the management of the air conditioning system, which is quite complex. As you know, we have all sealed windows and doors. We don't have natural air that comes in, so we have to hydrate the air as it comes in. I do understand that members of the team are here as well if you have specific questions on the design or the process, but this is the first step in that. We've also asked Wright Construction to provide us with a cost estimate on a full replacement of a city hall building of this same stature, was an estimate around $7 million for the same building. But that does not include the land, but we could look at other opportunities for land, but that would be approximately the replica cost. So this is the beginning of the design work for the impact to this building.
Right, and I just want to be transparent. I did meet with Wright Construction. They're a professional team, no two ways about it. But I also indicated to them and I invited them to be here tonight because I think we need to, as a council of five, or potentially in a few weeks, as a council of seven, I think have a discussion. And I heard Dwight mention it tonight, and I've heard it around town. Do we want to put a Band-Aid on this city hall, or do we want a new city hall? And we have received some numbers, but I think when you start looking at these numbers, it would beg the question. And I would invite Wright Construction or anybody to, I just, you know, and I guess maybe I'm asking members of the council, do we want to, what do we want to do here? Do we want to fix our current city hall, rip off the roof, and got it? Or do we want to look at a new city hall downtown?
I say fix, because I mean, on here, we're looking at $120,000. As Arlene just said, we're looking at $7 million to build a similar, you know, structure to this on a piece of property that we'd already own. You know, we'd either be using property downtown that we own, but then we're not going to get any return on investment by selling it or offering it up for the RFPs that are out there. So I mean, for $120,000, that's a drop in the bucket compared to $7 million to build plus whatever land is.
Oh, no, no, no. Look, on the surface, I think you're absolutely right, but this is just the beginning of the fees. Can we have you come up and maybe discuss some of the fees of what it would be ultimately in total to fix what we're looking at?
And I think as far as being downtown, you kind of want things that are going to draw people down there. I don't see the city halls being that big of a draw. You know, only on our most contentious, you know, nights that we have meetings that we actually pack the house and, you know, have overflow parking. We need something that's going to draw people down there all the time for restaurants and everything else that's going on.
I do not in the least necessarily disagree, but I want to have the discussion, and I'm glad you guys are here tonight. So welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What do they say? Don't shoot the messenger? But I'm dropping, I'm dropping, I'm getting the elephant out of the room or in the room, whatever that looks like. Okay. Thank you for being here.
No problem. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Todd Griffith, the mechanical engineer with Matern Professional Engineering. We were contacted by MEG approximately a year ago to begin the, start the process of just designing the replacement HVAC system, which we've been working on, we're under contract to do. We've about completed that HVAC renovation. When we were about 70% complete with that design work, we were notified that there were some additional architectural considerations that needed to be made, which I then advised MEG that we need to bring on an architectural firm to help us with the design of those architectural items, which we recommended RG Architects to join the team. RG Architects provided us with a proposal to provide architectural services to design those architectural features and incorporate them into the design of the HVAC renovation, which is on the agenda tonight to approve that additional fee for architectural design services. In addition to that, I recommended that we bring on a construction manager to work with us during that design process to help us with logistical issues, budgeting issues, and the other things that construction managers do and are good at during the design process. And that's the proposal from Wright Construction. So we've built a coherent team to help you and guide you through this renovation of your building with an architect, an MEP engineer, and a construction manager, and that's what we're here tonight to talk about and answer questions.
No, thank you. Thank you. And like I said, thank you very much for being here.
Some of the architectural issues can include a complete review of all ADA requirements, including the parking lot, any exterior doors and pathways, so that we are ADA compliant as well as our restrooms are ADA compliant.
Sure, sure. And I just want to be clear where I'm coming from. I see the $39,000. I see the $83,000. What's the total cost going to be? I think honestly, we're not discussing the total cost tonight. It's not here, but that's an important question to be answered.
So those, that number, whatever the total is, I can't remember exactly what it was, that is for, $120,000, is for design and professional services from the beginning of the project, which includes design through bidding and permitting process and through the construction process.
I understand, but I think, thank you for that. But I think it's fair to know what we're looking at if we're going to tear all the ducts out of here, all the ceilings out of here, move out for what, six months? Is that what we're looking at?
Five to six months is correct.
Yes.
I think we need to have a little more discussion on it, on what we're looking at, please.
And we've put a budget number on that construction cost. Scott, do you want to speak?
What we came up with is around, we've done multiple mechanical renovations. We did Naples City Hall as well. But we've come up with a budget is around $1.7 million, which would include the roof. There's no mechanical equipment on the roof, which is, which was good, but we did look at the roof, and it is, I think, in the last year of its life and maybe even out of warranty. And then along with the mechanical renovation, there's architectural aspects, as Todd mentioned, where you get into ceilings and then, you know, it'll cost us much or more to store the lights and replace them, then you get into, it's just a domino effect of, then do you protect the floor, do you replace it? And then you paint while you're in here. And we would guide you through that process. And our construction manager fee is for pre-construction services, which guides you. The next part two would be the guaranteed maximum price, which we would present, which would be for the best value. We would, we would bring subcontractors in, we would advertise, do walkthroughs, emphasize local participation, and put together guaranteed maximum price by trade. It's all open book.
Right.
For you to.
No, no, absolutely.
Give you our recommendation.
I just want the public to hear, I want counsel to hear, people on TV to hear what we're looking at. Kind of $7 million first, all in for a brand-new place downtown or wherever. Or $1.7, where basically this city hall gets a new roof, gets all the ducts ripped out, gets a lot of the walls and ceilings ripped out, we evacuate or move down the road for five or six months somewhere else. And when would you propose that we do that?
Yes, sir. So we would propose to start, I think one of the dates we touched on, so we have enough time to review it with staff before the board, was May 20th for the guaranteed maximum price presentation. And that includes the architect being done. He just, he just got on board. Todd's been on board for a year, the mechanical engineer. So that includes getting the architect up to speed, which is about four weeks. So we'd be looking at about May 20th with the guaranteed maximum price, which we would back up two weeks to have it done two weeks prior, to start construction in June.
Guaranteed maximum price? I'm sorry, help me understand.
Guaranteed maximum price is what the construction manager would put together, and it's a CM at risk, or construction manager at risk. We would put together budgets for each item of the work along with multiple bids per trade, and we would give you the best, recommend, not necessarily the low or the, you know, recommend the best subcontractor for the work, and we would evaluate them. And we put a book together. We might have a, we would have a contingency because it's an existing building. You don't, you don't really know always what you're getting into. Contingency would be used at the approval of the city. And then we would put that book together, and it would just, it would be a budget. It would be your construction estimate, basically, but it would be a guaranteed maximum price, which means.
Not to exceed $1.7, $1.8.
Without a change order. And we would also do.
That's like an addendum, right? A change order? It's like an addendum.
Yes. I mean, it could be, the guaranteed maximum price could be an addendum to the pre-construction We would do a change order to do a direct material purchase order, which we've talked about with Todd, doing our early equipment procurement package, which we would need to have the equipment put in our contract, and then we would select, we would buy the equipment direct. You would pay for it, get the tax savings. We would change order that tax savings back to the city or the construction budget.
Now, and as long as we're, we tell you exactly what we want, and we don't change it, that's the price. Bottom line?
Well, we would write scopes of work. Based on his drawings, we would have detailed scopes of work for each trade. So we would outline exactly what we're doing. So yes, unless that was changed.
Or you run into something.
Or we run into something, which would be a discussion structurally or whatever. But we would, we would write detailed scopes of work per trade that you could see, so we're not just taking subcontractor proposals and throwing them in the book. They're signing a scope of work, so everybody's bidding the same scope.
No, I understood. And like I said, I want the long version because it's important for people to understand this. It really is. And there were some questions here, and then I'm going to call on Fred, and then I'll be done. There were some questions here in our, and in the public comment section. Could we, could we address those? Was there, I don't know if anybody took those or got a copy of them, Matt? If you want to hand me that, I'd be happy to rattle through them. Are they questions that we had for the costs of this project? There were some issues that I know were raised, and I would just as soon use, yes, this time to go through those if we could. And then Fred, you're on deck. Thank you.
I didn't have any. I think you all hear me.
Come on, come on up, yeah, please.
All right, Fred. I didn't, by the way, I'm Dwight Essman. First of all, Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you for bringing this up. Because a lot of times, financial issues.
Sure. Death is always in the details.
Thank you.
And I was a political science major, so I do the best I can.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilman Gibson, I don't necessarily believe it has to be downtown. Okay. No, I was just asking, is anybody asking these tough questions? Do we know that this is the best route to go? How much is this building worth as is? How much is it going to cost? Can we use the money that's over at the community development that has to be used for their space? I don't know the answers to those questions. I'm just glad that you were asking them. And so I don't think I have specific questions for these guys. I'm not saying their bid is not good. I'm just asking, do we want to go in certain directions?
Well, and there's another way to look at it. If we're going to look at numbers from my political science undergrad major point of view, we can spend $2 million on the renovation or not spend the $2 million on the renovation, and then what can we get for this building? Is it a million or is it two? So now we're up to $3 or $4 million as opposed to $7 million. However, is that $7 million a real $7 million, and where is it? So, sorry if I'm the fly in the ointment, but I just wanted to be clear to everybody because it's our taxpayer dollars what we're talking about.
And again, that's all I'm asking, is that we have the discussion, and you include the cost of relocating for six months as a consideration as to whether, you know, and maybe you renovate and sell.
Well, and you're also missing from that equation that we, all right, so we put all our energies to finding an appropriate location and building it, and then things start falling apart here, so we have to spend money to fix a place that we don't even want anything to do with? And then who's going to buy it unless we fix it up? So there are so many variables, and I just don't think we have an extra $6 million, $5 million laying around, too. It would be wonderful. I asked them to build a parking garage. They added another $2 million, so.
No, thank you, Laura. And Fred, you've been patient, so thank you very much. Fred?
Well, first of all, if we were to build a new building, and we were going to use some of these funds, let's say we're going to construct it and use the money we have in building inspection and some community development money, we'd have to make the building bigger because the building isn't big enough to hold. This building, which is what we're talking about replicating for $7 million, give or take, this does not have space in it for community development or building inspection or code enforcement or anything like that. So what, the seven will grow. Second thing is, if we're going to do a building in Florida, you're better off to do it the way they're proposing, which is kind of a design bill construction management approach as opposed to a different, the other way. So if we were to build a new one, we would be using the same approach. And I think the reason that they've went with Wright Construction is the fact that is the fact that they've done a municipal city hall, a major mechanical renovation with some other stuff, I think. So I, I think that, do I like the price? No, I'd like it better if it was a million bucks. But we, we're getting a building that's gonna be security-hardened, which wasn't mentioned in the discussion, and that is not cheap. We're gonna be upgrading most of the stuff in here so we can live in the 21st century with all of our technologies and all that. They're talking about different AV, AV and IT stuff in this building, right in this room. So, so the audience doesn't have, if you sit on that side of the room, you can't see the screen. So they're working on solutions to having, wherever you sit, you'll be able to see it. The dais is supposed to get remodeled. It was all discussed on the list. It's a comprehensive list, and it's, and the odds are, whatever the not-to-exceed is, once you get into it, there will be legitimate reasons that you want to raise that price some. But if you build a new one, it would be the same thing. I mean, that's, that's my point of view, so that's it.
Thank you, Fred. Laura?
No, no.
Amy?
I, I understand the point of view that you have presented, Mayor, and it's, the problem is that we do not have, we do not have, we have uncertainty about some of the details. But if you, we're just gonna look at this in a very broad-brush way. We're comparing, you know, 1.7, 1.8 for a building that has some improved functionality, and I believe would last us for a certain number of years, maybe 10 years or something, or more. I think that was the discussion.
Approximately 15 years for the air conditioner.
So I think, you know, we, we would have a functionality here of, you know, 15 years. It's always nice to have a new city hall, because this sort of looks, you know, it's a rehab. It doesn't look, it's not that presentable, in my opinion. But I don't see where we have, we don't have the property, so even the 7 million estimate is totally a guesstimate. And if we start adding space, we're gonna add another billion, and then we have to add property, unless we use, and I don't, I'm not in favor of using the ones we have downtown, which would be the only, be the only side. So I think that, just to be prudent, given the other demands that we have on our expenses, that we should go with this rehab offer. And, and then we'll have a city hall that we could live with, you know, where we can be relatively warm, where we can hear people when they speak to us, where we have some added security to our staff, and we can still function well. So, and nobody wants to spend 1.7 million to fix things. You know, it's just not fun. But we do that in our own homes, and, you know, we have to do it for the city. So I think we should go ahead with this.
No, and I appreciate that point of view. I'm just thinking it's for the discussion, for the good of the order to, yeah.
I think it's really important.
For people to hear what, yeah.
It's not just $100,000. And I don't think, and I, I don't, I wasn't, I didn't think it was $100,000.
No, 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 I know, I know.
And we threw about numbers.
Neither did Councilman Gibson, in his defense.
And I don't know any, we weren't, we weren't in this together, but I asked the question, and it was answered, what would it cost to get a new one? So every, I could assure Dwight that everyone thought about it. It's not like we're, you know, here.
Right, absolutely.
We, we did do our due diligence, and I just, I'm not ready for an $8 million project. As much as I would like one, and if we can have some functionality here and improved, I think we should go ahead with it. And, and I'm, and I'm sorry that we have to spend whatever it is, 1.7. We'll just do the best we can, and hopefully, we won't ask for things that we can't, that they can't deliver.
No, and my last point, although maybe it won't be, but my last, my last point as of now, how many other bids did we get on this pricing for the 1.8 million that we got to compare it to?
That's just an estimate this time, until they complete the design, and then we'll have the...
I can, I can comment on that.
Yes.
How that works with the process. We're in the design phase right now. Once the design documents are completed, then Scott will take those design documents and put them out for pricing to subcontractors. And that's where the guaranteed maximum price, or the finalized estimate for construction will come from. We're just ballparking it now at 1.8 or 1.7, but it, it could be plus or minus once that final pricing exercise is, is taking place.
Once, once the final pricing comes in, there might be a list of priorities. We might have to take something off or add something on, if it came in under, or whatever. We would work with you, you know, and what's best for the city.
We're gonna be looking at phase, if there's necessary, we'll look at phasing. As you know, originally, we had some of these things phased out to several years. We're just looking at a cost effectiveness also, as we're looking for the recommendation on things that absolutely should be grouped together to save money in the long run. But we'll continue to look, if there's opportunities, the things that we would phase later, we'll, we'll present that as a package and further in the CIP.
Thank you.
The most cost-effective and quickest way to do a mechanical renovation is, even, just like a school, is moving people around. Instead of working at night, you do pay a premium for night work, night and weekends.
That's right. Did I hear that we might do, entertain all-night meetings because of this inconvenience? Just depends, you know, I brought that up a year ago about night meetings, but it was a horrible idea. Fred, you're up.
I'm still laughing about that. The, first of all, one of the reasons you want to do everything if you can now is, wouldn't it be terrible? Do you do all this work, and we didn't do the roof? And we get a roof leak, and it ruins the new ceiling. Forgetting that, the only thing I would encourage, I'm, I'm not sure that this, saying we're ready to evacuate the building and start building sometime in, end of May, I think, I think you need to look at that a little more. I think we, we need to have a good plan of where we're gonna go, if we are gonna move out, which is somewhat different than I thought we were gonna do. And then bring that back, but go ahead with the design. That doesn't affect the design. But get it, I think you'll, I think you'll know more about where, when we can do different things in a month than you do now.
So to be clear, we're, we're not looking at a complete evacuation of all of it. We're looking at some phases and what we can do. We have talked with Chief DeWitt, and they have graciously offered to host us for public meetings, or wanna process with that. We're looking at existing space that we have, possibly with, partnering with community development, as well as some space at the Lyles and space at the Ruck Center. And then whether or not some folks might be on one floor or the other floor at times. So we're working through that process.
But nighttime meetings?
Well, we would be looking at the schedule with the, with the fire department, to coordinate with them on the best time for the meetings.
Code for nighttime meetings, everybody, just so you get it.
I believe political science.
Depends what's driving the issue on the nighttime meetings. I rest.
You could have a meeting out there in that big room, because you're not interfering with their operations. They got plenty of parking. I mean, they got tons of parking.
They're too busy darned today.
I don't think there'd be a problem.
We'll see, though. It might have, might become a problem.
You never know, right?
What kind of emotion do we need to make there?
I had heard at my little one-on-one meeting with Wright Construction, it was gonna be night meetings. So you guys know my sense of humor well enough.
I didn't hear that.
Motion to approve.
Yeah. There's been a motion to approve for the design, and let's be clear here.
A and B.
Yeah, A and B? Yeah, we can make it easy this way, absolutely. Okay, motion to approve in a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Anything else to add, gentlemen?
Just wanted to mention on the schedule that we were, the reason we were working on an accelerated schedule was to try and get the project completed before season comes back in next year. So we worked on it...
November, October, November, yeah.
So we were, you know, trying to help by accelerating that construction schedule. So we've been working really hard to get the design project, the design documents done. We needed to get this approved tonight, so the architect can do his part. So thank you.
Not yet, not yet.
Thank you. And then the, the equipment purchase is a long lead on them. That, that equipment is built to order. It's not sitting on a shelf somewhere. So we've just completed an early equipment package and turned that over to Scott, so they can go ahead and purchase the equipment, get it on order, and get it coming to the site in anticipation of construction starting.
And you guys, thanks for being here, gentlemen. You've answered the tough questions. Maybe not all of them, but enough for now. You deserve a vote. Thank you. Counsel, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson? Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thanks for being here. Thank you very much.
So we have E now?
Imagine this discussion if you weren't here. Thanks for being here. All right. And I'm sorry, where, yes, Amy, what are we? E, E. Yes, please, item E. I was gonna say, take your pick. I think you both had some thoughts on it, but, but, Amy?
No, I didn't say he.
You didn't? All right, just checking. Ladies before gentlemen, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
I, I had pulled E because, talking with the artists down there in the cottages, they, they were kind of hoping for a little more consistency in, in being able to stay down there. Because, you know, they, they've been there a while, and having to go through an RFP to, they basically have to compete with other people to take over a spot that they've been in, you know, for X amount of years. And I, I don't see that as being very fair, but trying to come to another way of doing it. You know, I've talked with the Art in Public Places chairman and, and staff, and looking at it, it's not an easy thing to, to put in there, where, you know, they can stay indefinitely, or, or things like that. So it was recommended to keep it basically how it is, but to, where the Art in Public Places Board puts a little more preference on if they're already in there, you know. So when they do have to compete with other people, because they're there, they kind of get a little more preference. And then ultimately, it does come back to us. So, you know, we do have a say in it. And I would hope, you know, most of you guys would feel the way I do, that somebody that's put a lot of time into, you know, building their business down there and drawing people down, bringing them in for the different art nights and things that they do, that we would want to keep them there, so.
And they were all alone for a long time.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Fred?
Yeah, quick question. Do, could we extend this occupancy a year or something like that?
I believe that they already had five renewals, and that's already been, so the, the original contract, which was put out the RFP, that, it's all expired. So you, you need to take some action on it. But I believe that the path that Deputy Mayor Gibson's put forward does give some preference. And of course, then ultimately, whatever comes back is gonna be up to you guys.
I'm sure, I, I'm the laiz on to the Art in Public Place, and they always discuss all these things. I mean, that's, they put a personal touch on it, but I think in this particular case, at all of them, I think it's better, because there, there is a waiting list for artists who want to get on. So it's, it's not fair to them to foreclose the opportunity. And, but one of the considerations is what they do for the downtown. I know that's been discussed in the past with, not this particular, but with the other types that come forward. So I have confidence in, in that particular citizens committee, and, and, and that's an important consideration. But I do think you have to have an open process for, for all these things, you know. That's what transparency is all about. And, and that particular person will just do it, or, you know, send her application in, and as, and if anyone comes up and has the application, they'll all be looked at, one against the other, and that's...
Councilman? Deputy Mayor, what are your, what are your thoughts?
So, motion to approve as it is. You know, they said they were gonna bake in that, you know, preference, you know, when evaluating it. And then, like I said, it does come to us for the ultimate decision, so.
Motion to approve?
Yep.
Second? Counsel, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
I'll second if you don't know.
I, I was, I thought I seconded, but if I, yeah, Laura, either way. Aye. A second and an aye. How's that?
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, great. City, Counsel, anything else on the consent agenda? Okay, we've, all right, very good. Proclamations and presentations, moving right along, just double-checking. You know, I miss addendums from time to time, and emails, which is not a good thing. Item eight, Mayor and Councilmember items. Item A, a discussion of a draft letter to FD EP regarding air quality monitoring stations at the Benita Grand Mine site location at 25501 Benita Grand Drive, green sheet 20-03060. And we had this discussion somewhere along the way, so I figured it was time to bring it forward for a larger discussion, like Fred would say, in the big room. So we're in the big room for the discussion. Thank you.
Welcome to the room.
Thank you.
This is an item that deals with some of the ongoing mining activity out in BG Mine. And there is discussion at the zoning board as to how this is monitored and how air quality would be determined. Nothing really materialized during those hearings, but there's been continued discussions about this item back and forth. And like you said, it is about time to bring this back into the big room. And this item is to ask the Department of Environmental Protection to establish an air quality monitoring station out there to see what the air quality actually is, and if there are particulates out there that we should be concerned about.
Right. And I, I guess the bottom line is, I've heard concerns. My, my hope, my overarching hope is there are no concerns. But I have heard concerns, so that's why I brought this forward. One of those things, better be safe than sorry. There's probably a better analogy, but that's where I'm coming from. Fred?
Yeah, I, I think this is great. I think we should do it. I think we should maybe put something, one additional line in there that, where you, depending on the way the wind blows, the readings are gonna be better or worse. So I think we ought to have different locations, not just one, because if you have the wind blowing in from the Gulf, it'll blow the silica, if any silica's in the air, it'll blow it to the east. So if we're sitting over on Benita Grande, we're not gonna get as good a dose as something to the east. And likewise, if the wind's blowing out the east, and it would, that would be a good loca... I think we at least need two locations to take advantage of the fact you get two kind of major predominant breezes here.
Councilman Forbes, this is a request for the DEP, who has jurisdiction over air quality to... So I don't know that we, I think we can, I think John, maybe, or someone can follow up with them, but I don't, I don't think we should dictate what their location standards would be.
I'm on record. I want at least two locations that look at that, so.
Maybe we add multiple locations.
I think it's fine to send this letter, but, but I just would like Arlene, or Matt, if he is the proper person, to just reflect, the authority here to regulate mines comes from the state. And I don't know which entity does it. I know we get regular readings on explosions and vibrations and all that. And so, and, you know, I would like to have reinsure, reassurance that the authority that is supposed to be regulating these mines is doing the proper thing. And this letter probably would go a long way in reassuring this aspect of the regulation. So it was, the claim has always been that they've been compliant with all the regulations, because I get the reports. The other thing is, is that, of course, we all know that this mine is in the process of being redeveloped over some period of time. And I assume we have in place, or will have in place, reclamation processes, which would protect the environment there. So I think it, to follow up on what the mayor is doing, in my view, that those things are as important, or maybe more important, to go forward with. So could we just get a report on that, so we understand what's happening there? And who really is the authority?
It's the DEP.
For everything?
For everything doing with the water. The fire marshal is in charge of everything related to blasting.
All right. I think we need to find out what they've been doing, since they're the authority, and if there's been any violations. And we could ask them to do the air if that's a particular concern to us. But, you know, if we're gonna go down this route, let's go the whole route.
So is that enough direction for counsel?
Yeah, I think a motion.
And I'll make the motion that we, yeah, so.
And I like the way it's written. I think it should be just the way it is, a request for, for monitoring, if they, and see what they say, you know.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, John. Okay, item nine, first reading and public hearing of the following ordinance.
Hey, ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, revising Section 7.02 Compensation Plan of the Administrative Regulations Guide, providing for severability, conflicts of law, scrivener's errors, and an effective date. There are, you know, hordes of people I can't see lining up for this one, but...
So Mayor and Counsel, this is a continuation of the presentation we brought last time, that we want to bring these regulations to compliance with FEMA reimbursement opportunities for us.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Public comment. Any members of the public? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye. All right, moving on to item 10, the second reading of the following ordinance, and public comments allowed here. Well, I was gonna allow it last time, too, but, all right, we're definitely allowed here.
Yeah, I don't know why the break.
Hey, come on.
An ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending Section 4-87 of the Land Development Code to adjust term limits of the, on the planning commission chair, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. As you recall, after we made the changes for the zoning board chair to allow Mr. Kurlander to stay on, there was a discussion by counsel as to if there are any other unknown reasons why we should have restrictions on the, the ability of chairs to stay on. And you directed us to move forward with removing that. The only other board that had that restriction was the local planning agency. The only other board that had that restriction was the local planning agency. So this would remove that, and hopefully that'll make the chair of that member board not run away.
Okay.
So do we have to have?
Uh, motion to approve?
Do we do public comment?
And then public comment? So I'll make the motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and then public comment? Anybody from the public that'd like to speak here? Okay, seeing none, motion to approve in a second. Further discussion, counsel?
I just want to say, I'm glad that this is a consistency, so that, you know, we're just not doing this for one person other than you.
Correct, right.
I think it's a very good policy, and thank you for following up on that.
No, absolutely. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay. Derek, what's next?
Hey, next is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending Division 37, subdivision 2, temporary uses, and subdivision 3, mobile food vendors of land development code relating to mobile food vendors, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, scribners' errors, and providing for an effective date. This is the food truck ordinance.
Great, thank you very much. And for those at home, looking at your package, Green Sheet 20-03058. John, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are winding towards the end of a very long road, and I know that there's been some comments about some minor tweaks that the council has. I have a couple I would like to make myself, if you don't mind if I'd walk through those very quickly.
No, please do. Take the, and the long version, please.
Yes, sir. If you look under permit required, there is, I would like the language to read, no mobile food vendor location is permitted, and I would like to add the language, outside a permitted location, and delete the language without an permit.
Excuse me, excuse me, would you start all over again? Where are you, where are you reading?
The permit required under item A, under 4-2153. It's really the first page of the language.
I see.
No mobile food vendor location is permitted, and I would like to add the language, outside a permitted location, and delete the language without approved, and leave the word permit. We are basically identifying the fact that we are permitting locations and not permitting food trucks.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask, can we add at that sec?
No, you're not allowed. Yes, yes. Please.
Could, can we add there, just like, you know, that since the state is going to be issuing the permits, give them a website of where it's located, so that, because people will do the same thing that they've always done, and that is call, you know, community development.
What we can do is, is there are, there are inspections and things that need to be done with the state that are identical to what's going on now, we can provide that location for those, those resources. So I don't know if you want to put that in here, or just have that, those resources available.
No, just on our website, maybe, or something.
Okay. Oh, that, we'd be happy to do that. We skip ahead to permit submittal requirements.
What section?
And you'll see there's stricken language. We're going to go to, actually, general standards past that. The reason why I bring this up is we are establishing areas for the food truck locations, not the food truck parks, but the food truck locations. You had public comment earlier today about whether Old 41 should be listed as one of the areas that prohibits or allows food trucks. I leave it to counsel's pleasure as to whether you would like them or not like them, but right now, we do prohibit them on Little Hickory Island, or the language prohibits them on Little Hickory Island. We do not address Old 41.
Are you recommending some change to the general standards? I still don't understand, you're just.
I know that it's been brought up, and I know it's been discussed. I'm not exactly sure what counsel's opinion is of that.
Could you clarify what was meant, but I don't know the language particularly about a specialized, special redevelopment area? Where is that in the language?
Well, there's, wait a minute, there's, actually, now that I'm looking at it a second time, in the section that John is pointing out, subsection, it's 10, under 2156, it's the last one on the first page of that subsection. The food truck site will not be permitted on Little Hickory Island in the general standards, but then again, in 4-2157, under prohibited locations, Little Hickory is also prohibited, so do we want to remove the duplication?
That'd be fine.
Okay. I'd say remove subsection 10.
I'd agree.
It just, it just doesn't make any sense.
And I want to make a bigger point, because we, I absolutely want to have this discussion, but whatever we're doing here, I want to hold out for a council of seven, because we're looking at some potentially large changes here. So I want to go through this exercise, but I'm gonna, whatever, whatever it looks like, motion to table until we're a full board again.
Yeah.
And I may be Whistling Dixie alone on that, but just say, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's wait till we get to the end.
Understood, understood, but I just want, don't want that to get lost.
I'm sorry, but I don't follow what you just said.
What I think John's asking for is if you go to section 4-2157, prohibited locations.
Six.
No, I'd say go to seven.
I thought you wanted to keep that one.
I want to keep that one, but I think what he's asking you, do you want to add the redevelopment area of downtown to the prohibited locations?
Go, Gibby, go, go back at him.
I, I don't, I don't know if we want to prohibit the entire thing. I do want to do protection for restaurants, you would put a 200, say, 250 feet limitation.
I think, I think the issue we have to be cognizant of is that this ordinance is being, you're opening up new areas, and you have, you are not necessarily looking to get into economic protectionism, except to the extent that in this situation, the downtown is a revitalization area, and you're trying to encourage investment. And where I could see a problem with food trucks, or at least a rational basis for why you'd regulate it, it's not necessarily pertaining restaurants, but also, you know, when you add food trucks to vacant parcels, or underutilized parcels that may have some development, but they're not fully developed, you're basically preventing the conversion of that to a redevelopment site. It's basically allowing the landowner to sit on it and make some money off it, but not seek the reinvestment that you're putting forward, and you're asking for the developers.
So prohibit the trucks, but not the park.
So a park may be a solution to that. If you have, if you have a park, then, then that's one location, it's not, it's not holding other locations from developing, but if you were going to say prohibit, if you were going to allow the trucks, then I would, I would maybe look to some more restrictive language on where they could operate.
So 2157 put the downtown redevelopment area.
Yeah. I think that's the way.
But not 2159.
And maybe what I'll do is I'll make a tweak to say that they may be allowed, except a food truck park. But at least then, you'd only be looking at one site, and you could look at the redevelopment impacts at that time.
Right.
And maybe you don't find a site that's acceptable. That would be my recommendation, rather than basing it on the restaurants, or giving them some kind of veto on whether a location go here, because.
What about, I know some restaurants have their own food truck, and on certain nights, you know, they do things where they have the food truck at their restaurant. How would we still allow that?
How are they doing it now? Are they, are they already doing it?
By, by how it reads, they would be allowed, because either they're doing it, or they would get the permit.
They get a special event. It's one thing to have a special event and have it, but I don't know if they're doing it now, if they're allowed to do it now.
Right now, we've got five permits out, and that doesn't involve existing restaurants. So if somebody had the food truck there, they would not be, have a permit, or they would not have a permit from our department.
Fred, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I think on food.
And I'm sorry, Mike, are you done for now?
But Mike's question.
Let him finish.
Yeah, okay.
Are they allowed to, though, if with this change?
But here's, here's, here's the answer to the question. If you have an existing brick and mortar business, you know, and they're adding food trucks, or a wheeled cart, or something like that, for an event, or something on certain days of the week, something like that, that's not really preventing redevelopment. That site is redeveloped. So I don't, I think that you could make, maybe make an exclusion, but we'd have to, I think we'd work on that before the next meeting.
Okay. And the only other question I had about, on the Little Hickory Island, there is a hot dog cart at the beach already, so would this be saying they can't be there anymore?
That would be a hot dog cart and not a food truck, which would go under a different set of regulations.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we weren't kicking somebody out there.
Since we're talking about this without having it written down, and I'm sorry, I have issues with presenting these things without having the ability to review it, I think one of the things we need to be careful about, the downtown area, is to, to define it properly, and I think it needs to be defined relatively narrowly in regard to geographic area. So, and I don't know what you're talking about, either of you, in that regard. So I think we should put some little effort, some more effort in there. I'm not, I think I understand what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying, but I, I know that there is, there was a proposal to put a food truck, there's a, on a brew pub that was outside of, north of, what is it, west of East Terry, that there, are we going to include that one? That's the redevelopment area, isn't it, or isn't it? What are you talking about? The overlay? So I don't, I don't think it should be.
It needs to be defined.
I think it should be in the narrow downtown area, where we, we're already going to be having a redevelopment along the river, and to have it geographically narrow, maybe that we had an overlay district, or, which was more narrow, so.
Between now and then, we could probably talk with DPZ and determine if it's inappropriate to have it in a specific zone, like T5, or do that.
Right, something like that. I think that's where you have to go, and I agree, and I think that Derek's suggestion is a good one, that you just do it in regard to encouragement of redevelopment in an important area. I still don't see the language of sensitive redevelopment, what line is it, but it's probably here somewhere.
It was in a prior version.
Oh, it's not here, that's why I can't.
John's asking to put it back in.
Okay, now I get it. All right, I didn't follow that. Now, I have my own little things. On section 4257, where prohibited processes, you have zoned for residential, I think you should put in zoned or used for residential purposes. You have that language under general standards, but you, there's an inconsistency there. I think anytime you have a prohibition because of residential, it should be used as residential in addition to zone, because unfortunately, we've had some issues where things are not really zoned residential, but they're using it residential, and we have other processes.
So we're going to allow them to do that? It's not zoned residential, but they can use it residential?
They do, we have that all over the city.
But what about a, an apartment complex that wants to bring in a food truck for certain nights?
Well, yeah, well, we will, we allow those things under special events, but if there's too many of them, then, for instance, maybe you can get enough for a seasonal, but not year round.
The point of having these regulations is to not impact people who are, normally would not expect to have a food truck in their area. That's the whole, otherwise, we might as well not have any regulation. And I think we are trying to protect residential areas.
And what we're talking about in these, and I didn't mean to interrupt, but what we're talking about for these are not the special events where you have a movie night or something one time a year. It would be something that you would permit the location for a food truck to be there for specific times and locations.
Like if Mosaic, like every Friday night, wanted to have a food truck come down next to the pool or something, you know?
Correct, correct. And it would basically be what we'd be looking at more, the Momentum Brewery is the one we've discussed regularly. It'd be a similar situation to that, where they want it on a regular basis for an indefinite or defined period of time, but it wouldn't just be for one night or one weekend during the year, it'd be every Friday or every Friday and Saturday.
And so, like, to go along with the downtown area, what if another brewery came into downtown? You know, if we just say they can't be downtown, now you're prohibiting them there. I mean, can we just say not on a lot that's vacant, but one that's already gone through redevelopment? You know, because if somebody built a brewery there, it's no longer waiting to be redeveloped, it would just be an accessory to that use.
Well, I think the problem is, if you go to develop it, and the guy says, I need a food truck there, and you say, I don't know, because it's not a permitted use, then what do you do about it?
Well, that's what I mean, that's why I'm saying we shouldn't, you know, just outright prohibit them, you know, in a situation like that.
No, they come before zoning, and then will go back again and say they could, that this should apply everywhere, and we should allow food trucks downtown. I mean, that's the alternative. It's complicated, it's not.
And, well, that's why I was trying to think of a way to do it, you know, to prohibit, you know, say, any, any given restaurant, and, you know, they're having a fight with their neighbor, and, and the guy next door says, all right, fine, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a food truck come down, and, and I'll have them every single day, right, right next to you. And, you know, even though I'm not a restaurant, I'm selling, you know, say, auto parts, or bicycles, whatever.
Widgets.
You know, now I'm purposely trying to screw my neighbor, you know, by putting a food truck there every single day.
Such language, deputy.
So, that's why I was trying to think of a way where we could just prohibit it with, within so many feet of a restaurant, unless that restaurant granted a waiver for them to be within that, say, 150 feet, 250 feet. So we could protect, you know, someone like Buffalo Chips that's been downtown forever, and.
In economics, it's called a government monopoly. You know, we're giving power through the power of the government for a person to have a restaurant and not be exposed to competition. I mean, if you want to talk about.
Well, we should never prohibit somebody from opening a restaurant next door to them, but it's a different story when you let somebody just bring in a food truck and, you know, park next door to them.
But we control that by not giving that location.
The example where this is, where, where I really see this issue, it's very similar to temporary uses, where people constantly put tent sales on their property. Maybe you have a, a gas station, and I'm sure you've seen some of these around, that's no longer has a flag operator, so they're no longer selling shell or some various thing, or maybe they have environmental situations, and they close down the gas tank, but they keep the convenience store. And then slowly, the convenience store starts to degrade, and it's not kept up, I'm sure, I think we've got maybe some code enforcement, and then suddenly, they say, well, I'm going to put a food truck under, under the old gas pumps. And all that's doing is giving rent activity to the property owner to keep his property in basically a state of disrepair, until some, someone comes along willing to pay their price to buy it. So when we're looking at redevelopment, now, look, this is America, and, and there are, you know, people can do what they want with their property, but we're, we're investing, and we're focusing, and the community is focusing, and the owners who are down there are focusing on redevelopment in, in an area like the downtown, then you don't want to have that kind of property just be able to sit there and continue. So there's no, they don't have a right now, and you don't have to give them that right to do something. So what we're really talking about doing is trying to encourage the continued reinvestment you're doing. I think that is a valid planning and legal basis for, for, for opening it up or putting additional restrictions on downtown that differs from Benita Beach Road and other areas. At the same time, Little Hickory Island is an, is an area that's predominantly residential, there's been a lot of discussion about what commercial activity is out there, some of the commercial out, out there is actually residential in nature, so going to Councilwoman Corumba's point, you know, so there are, there is a good basis for having those restrictions there, and I think there's a good basis for having restrictions here. those restrictions there, and I think there's a good basis for having restrictions here. So, I think, I think that's the key is, when we base it on, that's the basis for it. We have to tailor those regulations to address that issue rather than, you know, the government monopoly or allowing one property owner extort another operator.
Is it the dog or is it the tail?
Yeah.
Fred? Fred, Fred, you've been wait, oh, Fred, just real quick. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, Fred.
My turn now?
No, Amy, Amy had some more, Amy had some more points. I apologize. Yep, I'm sorry.
We got off on, on elaborate discussion, but we mentioned at the last time, something about some recourse, and I thought, I, I read some recourse language in it, but it didn't, I don't see how it really worked. I think at the end, you said if, if they got citations for neighborhood services would come in and do certain things, that they wouldn't renew their permit.
Ah, yes.
But I don't know if that's, I don't, I'm not sure how that would really work, if there really was a recourse written into this.
We had, we had discussed a couple of options. I know, I know John, and I may have came up at LPA about if there are violations against the property, repealing that, so if, if that's the desire, the council will add some language into that. I had floated at the last meeting the possibility of, to prevent people, since we're looking at locking it into the property, of basically have a use it or lose it policy, that these would expire if they're not utilized. So, someone can't, maybe even in the downtown, site a location for a food truck park and then not develop a food truck park, sit on it, and then prevent any other food truck parks from going in. So, I think, I think like a lot of conditional uses, this is something that it should be in active use or it gets released, and that, because there is a separation from other properties. So, if that's something that you'd like us to add, I know I floated at the last meeting, but I feel like I got support for it, we'll, we'll put that in before the next meeting.
Well, in, in the non-compliance section, and that's the, the non-use, but there's non-compliance that is in there that says, "If a permit holder is found to be operating inconsistent with the standards of the permit, it's documented by a violation notice or conviction by the Benita Springs hearing examiner, the permit may be suspended or revoked by the city council after hearing that evidence."
But the standards, which you said, you know, having to do with parking or something, the standards are, how would they violate them, really? But whatever. That's not a very strong recourse, in my opinion. And the other thought I had was, since we are learning about this, we don't, we, you know, this is kind of a new thing for us, that we might consider doing some kind of a time limit on the site permits, where we could have automatic or administrative renewals if there weren't any problems that had occurred over the, the period of time. Those are two, two ideas that we didn't really talk about.
What say you?
I don't have a problem with those.
More words are, more words are better than less right now.
Well, we've done that.
I'm just looking to see if John got that.
We had to allow it when.
Dealer's choice.
When the permits are, when we're considering permits, allow that to be part of the criterion where we approve the permits. We could decide on a case by case. If it's an obvious place, we're not going to worry about it, but if it's something that we're questionable about, we might want to have some.
So, previously, you had an ordinance, I hate to bring this one back, but the backyard chicken ordinance, we were concerned about the effects on the adjacent property owners of that. So, you actually had that as a temporary permit that could be administratively approved if there was no complaints, if there was no concerns. This is the backyard hen ordinance that you had language for that allowed community development staff to continue the permit as long as there was no concerns or complaints registered.
And for the record, I voted against the chickens. That was a mistake, in hindsight. It was, and that was like 2012, 13. I voted against the chickens. I wouldn't do, I would not do that again.
It was a backyard hen.
No, I, I, it was a mistake for me to vote against the chickens.
Oh.
But it passed anyway.
You disagree with the policy of.
The chickens?
No, no, of having the ability to, if you have, if you don't have any complaints, then, if you have a complaint, then you can rescind the permit.
Well.
The policy itself.
I know, well, I mean, look, I mean, it's, we're wide open here for discussion. And like I said, I'm gonna hold this until a full council, if I have an agreement from my council. Yes.
Then I'm gonna go forward.
Yeah.
If we could look at transects downtown, I think we can very easily address this because it's.
If we look at what?
Transects for downtown. Because there's certain transects where microbreweries are permitted, there's certain transects where there's not.
Right.
Listen, if we can just go handle it that way and kind of push that issue, maybe a little more clarity in it. In terms of, of the criteria for, for vacating the permit or approving the permit, I tried to leave this a little bit general in terms of what's written, because that gives you the ability to look at specifics as to what comes before you. So, there may be some situations where you see that there's going to be a potential problem, you can require additional, I'll call it mitigation, either for the, the truck itself or for a potential park. There may be situations where it's a very clear location that this is what you want, and this is what is appropriate here, and those mitigation strategies will be significantly reduced because they're not needed. We could be more particular. I try to be general, that would allow you the flexibility, depending on where it was, you could use these standards to require certain things in certain places so that compatibility could be ensured. So, some of it was intentional, but if this council doesn't like that strategy, and we want to be more specific, I'm, I'm fine with doing that, so. But some of, some of your concerns, I was looking at addressing in the permit itself and not so much in the regulations.
As long as that, it's not clear that we could even say that from this regulation. You know, because what we say, we, we, we don't want to approve the, the site unless whatever we figure we want to put in there.
Mm-hmm.
We have the power to do that without their saying, "You're not treating us right, and we're gonna sue you?"
When you condition a site, and I'm sure.
Each one of the, we're, we decided that we would, the staff would look and condition these individually, rather than try to set standards for parking and everything in the code. They want to see what the applicants were proposing, because this is a new field to us, too. So, if someone comes in with a site plan, they show their existing building, they show the location approximately of where the food truck's gonna be, maybe if there's going to be tables around it, and we look at that, we look at the impacts on the track, on the parking and say, "Okay, well, you've taken up X amount of your required parking, so that doesn't work." Or, you're, you have 15 seats, well, that's gonna add X many more cars to the site, and that's gonna cause a problem for parking. So, the problem was, we don't know what the standard should be for food trucks, a lot of it's driven by their, their popularity, so I think what staff was hoping to do is have general standards and then have specific conditions that go through at the administrative level. You know, there's only certain permits that go to the council. We could put a process in there that if the applicant objects those conditions, then all of them come, then those would always go to the council. When they object, that way, at least, you would see what the issues would be. But, you know, you had a desire to get as many of these, the small ones through without that problem.
I would just say in the ordinance that, that the authorization for the permits could be conditioned by the staff or something along that, which I don't see in here at all.
And what we were planning to do was not dissimilar from other zoning actions, whatever mitigation strategies you look at do need to be proportionate with the impacts we're looking to address. So, they can't be disproportionate.
Amy, anything else at this time?
No, that's good. Thank you.
You're good for now? Okay, Fred?
Yeah, I've got three or four items. Let me start out with the lesser one. I think we want to add in there, the communities, meaning HOAs and COAs, and they may be able to work their way around to take care of just apartment houses, but at least those. They should also be able, without getting a special permit or anything, to let a food truck come in to have a block party. It's not gonna create a traffic problem, so we don't need a special event permit, as well as there are some individuals that may want to have a food truck come to their house, sit in their driveway for a private party, their whole, how would we? In fact, I know that does occur, probably doesn't occur legally, but I don't see that we need to be approving that kind of stuff. The board of the HOA or the COA can deal with that, probably better than us. So, that's number one. Does anybody want to jump in on that before I go to the more meaty?
Don't even think it needs to.
I'd say if it's at somebody's house for a party at their house, as long as they're not, like, allowing people to walk up from the rest of the neighborhood and, and buy, you know, if it's solely, you know, contained for a party at the house, I don't see why not.
But a block party.
Well, in, in that situation, a block party, that's different, you know, in the community, same thing. But, but I mean, like, you said, somebody in their driveway for a party at the house, I think it should be a party at the house and not, and not just like setting up shop in somebody's driveway.
But if it's on a street, like a cul-de-sac, and they park the truck in the street, it's a block party.
Fred, we have an objection.
Yeah, I think we're just getting into the weeds, and we, we've already mentioned that we might be tabling this, so we don't need to.
If you don't get into that weed, then we're gonna have to be approved and.
No, because if I wanted to have a party at my house with a truck, I'd have to get the approval of the HOA. Okay, I couldn't do it just be.
I didn't say that. I said, "We don't want to be the one that has to approve it."
Right.
That's all I said. I said, "We need to have it in there that they have."
And we don't. It's already in there. It's, the state has dictated what.
It says it's a clubhouse or something like that. Okay.
You have to go along, you have to get the approvals. That would be one of the approvals you would have to get, and show somebody in community development that you already have the approval of the HMA, and that, you know, X, Y, and Z is gonna go occur. I mean, there are, there are steps you have to go through. So, we don't have to add more.
I'm not adding more. I'm trying to reduce them for us.
Okay.
Okay?
Again, I, okay.
Okay, now, next one is, I think on food truck parks, we should put a limit of two, and then we study what the impact is, because they are gonna have an impact on. I think we ought to consider doing that. Two, and then we take a timeout, and we look and see if we're getting many complaints, if there's a problem, if there isn't, and you can open it up and add another one, or another one, or whatever you want to do, but I think to just say, you can have as many as you want, is not the way we want to go. I think two is a reasonable number. And the other one would be, I think that we need to make it a little clearer that if you do have a food truck park, that if it's got any views from a residential area, they have to have dense hedges or decorative screen walls to preclude it being an eye, a problem with vision from the residential area.
Actually, you would allow me, that was one, that was really the only suggestion from the LPA, was that a potential food truck park be designed in its way to be compatible and not interfere with an existing neighborhood or surrounding property.
Right, and all I do is just beef that up and just add that, that comment. That's, that's all I, I have. I would say, when it comes to food truck parks, you want to be real careful where you're gonna put them on the redevelopment area of Old Downtown. I'm not saying you couldn't put one there, but I don't think in a lot of the places that it would do the rest of the development opportunities a lot of good.
Well, they, they would have to come to the council and need a case, so.
So, that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Mike?
Um. Laura?
Well, I was just gonna suggest we go look at the map and do the T-sections and focus on what we're specifically talking about, but John already mentioned that we were gonna do that. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mike?
Oh, I, I did have one thing under the mobile food vendor park. It has in there the 250 feet from another park or mobile food vending location. If somebody just has a location, why should we prohibit them from opening a park within the 250 feet? Because it'd be the same as, you know, if somebody has a, a food truck on their property, and I want to open a restaurant with a 250 feet, you're not gonna stop me from opening a restaurant.
It was added in the draft as part of symmetry, but it does not have to remain.
Yeah, because I, I could see going the reverse, not allowing a food, you know, vendor location to be within 250 feet of the park, but.
I can, I can strike that, that mobile food vending location if, if council wishes.
Yeah.
Is that?
Too much detail. I mean, I think we're losing what we're trying to do here. I think the whole point of having 250 feet was not to have them in every corner, no matter what they were, so.
Yeah, but like a food, then, the food park is more like a redevelopment thing, you know, it's, it's like a restaurant coming into the area, where the other one is more of a tempor, well, somewhat temporary location.
Why are we having, why do we have this resolution?
Well, I, I think that, I think the distinction, though, Deputy Mayor, is the, is the down, is the redevelopment area. So, along the logic we were talking about for the redevelopment area, I think your, your logic holds true there. Why would we restrict it? Why would we prevent food truck parks, which are an actual investment versus the mobile vending, but if we're not gonna allow the actual food truck vendors individually into the downtown redevelopment district, then that wouldn't apply to that issue. I think what we're talking about is outside of that, elsewhere in the city.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You're talking about the downtown area?
No, I'm talking city, citywide. Because, because if somebody just has a, a food truck, you know, we approved a, a single location for a truck, or two trucks, whatever, you're, you're basically precluding somebody from making a bigger investment on a property, making the whole park, which is a, a better, higher use. So, you know, we're, we're squashing that in preference of, you know, somebody just having a truck or two at a, at another business. So, I, I think it's fine the other way, where, you know, if you have the park, you have the bigger and better use, and you're keeping them from being too close to that, but, like I said, you're squashing somebody from redeveloping something or doing, you know, a, a bigger, better use, so.
Okay. Amy, do you have anything else?
I, 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 I'm not sure I agree with that or not. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, at this point, council, do you have more questions? Because at this point, I'm gonna make a motion to table. Derek?
Real quick, should we, should we try and come up with some language based on, on the deputy mayor's comments and then, and then see how you like it?
And postpone to a date certain, so.
Yes, it's not table, it's, we're.
Here we go.
Continue it to your, your March 18th meeting at 9:00 AM.
I think it has to be.
No, following.
Oh, you want to do the next one?
I won't be seated at.
April 1st, isn't it?
April 1st? Oh, that'll be.
No fooling. Election's St. Patrick's Day, and gets sworn in on April Fool's Day.
Yeah, I know.
Who will be the fools? The new guys or us?
Yeah. But, yeah, but date certain, absolutely, and I'm sorry, I used the wrong choice of words. I apologize.
Okay, so we would do April 1st at 5:30.
9101 Benita Beach Road. Okay?
Second.
But is, okay, so there's been a motion to postpone to date certain, April 1st? Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Council, is there further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumbro.
Great, thank you, everybody.
And we'll get the new draft early, right?
Yes.
A lot more time now.
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, that's wonderful. Derek, what else do you have?
I have nothing, but I have David Theriault calling in.
Okay.
Uh-oh.
For an item I have.
Okay.
All right, I got a plate on there. If you want to open up a public comment on general items now, it'd be a good time.
Okay. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
Oh, never mind. We, you know what, we don't need David, so. Public comment, I'm done.
Okay, very good. Public comment.
You fixed it? You ready?
Jeez.
That's good.
Not bad, Rooney. Hello, Kathy.
Hello.
Well, pass me work.
Well, after that last discussion, I think I'm more confused than I was before, but I know that you will all come to some kind of a, like I said, it, there's gonna have to be a compromise. I guess, I wasn't gonna say this, but I do want to say, I don't believe in an app, I'm talking about the downtown redevelopment, Old 41 Corridor now, which I care about a lot. I don't feel there should be an absolute ban, but I also cannot envision an appropriate location anywhere downtown for a food truck park. As far as having food truck events, that's something different. You'll have to work that out. But anyway, that's not what I was gonna say. What I was gonna say is, is we all know there's an election coming up, and while I do not live in either District 2 or District 4, I want to encourage everybody who does live in those districts to read up on your candidates, and I'll say this, I've, I've been to two forums now, and we are so fortunate to have such qualified people willing to run and live in a fishbowl, as you all know you do. Yes. Now, District 2, of course, was Greg's district, in alphabetical order, Shelley Anderson, Adam Hughes, and Jesse Perdomo, all excellent. And in District 4, in alphabetical order, Chris Corey and Ben Herschison, both excellent. So, please, everybody, read up and vote, and also the amendments. Ted had an excellent article in The Banner explaining all the amendments, which I saved. So read up on them and see how you wanna vote. And if you're not sure, ask somebody that you think is knowledgeable, but please get out and vote. Now, the other thing, it's time again for me to remind everybody about donating blood. Most of you know I'm a platelet donor, I've done it for 11 years, every two weeks, and I don't know if you're aware, but it takes six whole blood donors to get one unit of platelets, and I donate at two hours, twice a month. It's so necessary, and I donated on Monday and they said they had to have a blood drive last week because they were so short on blood, so. You know, not everybody is qualified to do it, nobody wants to do it or has the time to do it, but once every 54 days, if you can, you know, please go and do it. And I think that's about it, but it's been a very interesting discussion. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Hello, John?
Hello, Mayor, Council. John Pano, the Benita Springs Downtown Alliance, just wanted to say again, thank you for everything. I wanted to remind everybody to get out and vote, as Kathy just said, and this weekend, celebrate in downtown and Old Rivers, in Old Downtown at Riverside Park with the National Art Festival, we'll have a lot going on down there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, John. Other members of the public, please come forward.
Dwight, I just wanna make it quick, I just wanna thank, thank you all again for having the discussion on the, on the fixing up of the building. I think it was good, informative, I learned a lot. Fred, in terms of your food truck, I don't live in a gated community, so my neighbor could put a food truck in their driveway, and I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but again, thank you all.
Great, thank you, Dwight. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we are, Derek, you're good? Okay, buddy, just double checking. Arlene, City Managers' Report.
Yes, at our last meeting, we provided you with a copy of our City Emergency Operations Plan. I'd like Tony Backhurst to come up and just give a quick overview. What we are asking of council this evening is to approve a resolution officially adopting emergency management plan in time of, in preparation of storm season approaching.
Tony, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Gonna try and give a pretty brief overview of our emergency operations plan and try and make it as legible and understandable as possible. The, the emergency management cycle is something that's ongoing, this isn't just in hurricane season, and also it's an emergency operations plan, not a hurricane plan. So in constant, throughout 12 months of the year, there's mitigation and preparedness, all departments actively work with that. The response and recovery phase is at the bottom of this cycle, I've got up, up on the screen. Again, we, we, 12 months of the year, that's going because we do have training, and, and that's ongoing, as well as communication with other partners. The methodology of the EOP and it's, you know, a lot of this stuff is from the federal government, it's acronym-heavy, so we've got FEMA operate on what they call the NIM System, which is the National Incident Management System. This methodology has been proven to work, it's been used for, for decades by the federal government, and what it does is create, within the response, a unified system. And what that system does, it allows to prevent, protect, prepare, and plan. So as we're operating through this with the, this operation plan, it puts it into, to some sort of system that is, is in line with what FEMA requires, this helps with grants, it helps with reimbursements, and probably most important, it allows for an, an efficient response and with all partners, and everybody has access to that. So within our city, I mean, we're, you know, a small component within a very, very big frame. How it would break down in terms of our command structure, I've got up there, we've got an incident commander, then there's the command staff, which is gonna include the public information officer, the liaison officer, and safety officer, and then at the bottom there, you've got operations, planning, and logistics, and finance into three separate categories. This is how it would break down from a command component within this, like, EOP, also it shows how it's tiered, there's tier one, tier two, and tier three for all of the, the city employees. A tier one would be all the employment, uh, all the, the personnel that are gonna be responding. Then you have tier two, which is gonna be field operations and section leaders, and then tier three would be, i- i- in essence, this. Everybody requires different levels of training, and in, in our package, it does show the requirements for that. Just so council is aware, to date, city employees have obtained more than 260 certifications through FEMA in order for us to be operating along this, so everybody has an understanding of what, how the response is. A lot of the specifics with regards to what would happen in an incident are not in this EOP, that would be in another acronym, an IAP, which is an Incident Action Plan, and the, on the previous slide, there was the, the planning manager, just, that person would be responsible for it, to give an idea of how convoluted this can get. There's 12 separate, minimum of 12 separate forms that FEMA would require on an Incident Action Plan to be completed. All of this stuff is put into the, the necessary forms, Incident Action Plan is what then goes basically upriver to the people that are gonna respond with resources, and as well, there's a unified command, so it gets super complicated, it's very hard in a short period of time to explain how, how the different systems work, but unified command, in essence, we could have the city command structure, there could be, the sheriff's department gonna have their command structure, fire department, and that's called Unified Command. Everybody is working alongside each other with single goals, that's why this is designed this way, you don't have people operating outside of the realm of the response, it's a unified command, so everybody is operating basically off the song, same song sheet, if that kinda makes sense. And the IAP on Incident Action Plan on the side, what do we need to do, who is responsible for doing it, what resources are needed, and how do we communicate? And I said, that's in at least 12 different FEMA forms that would need to be required in order to do that, but that deals with specifics, that's gonna do with resource requests and that kind of stuff. And then at the end of each operational period, so it could be a day, it's invariably, it's a 12-hour period, dependent upon the emergency situation, at the end of a 12-hour period, that IAP is gonna be updated, sent up to what would be Lee County, to the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, and then the resource requests are dealt with that way. It is, it's, the best way to describe it is funnel in and funnel out. So if you look at this, at the, at the bottom is incident command, unified command, which is what I've just discussed, which is where we are at the bottom of this. So in order for everybody in that unified command, you've got a whole bit, a whole bunch of different agencies that are all gonna require things, they put it into, into a single, single IAP, it then funnels in to the people who have the resources. If they don't have the resources, it's gonna funnel out to state, it's gonna funnel out to, to the federal agencies. The system works incredibly well and has been utilized in, in every emergency. This plan is done in conjunction with FEMA requirements, and it's gone, Lee County EOC have looked at it, and they've said it's, it's in conjunction and works along with theirs In order for us to, to apply for things, not apply, but request resources, Web EOC is the system that's used, everybody uses Web EOC, it, it's logged, it's dated, so if we have asked for a specific item, it's gonna go through, it's trackable, this is great for FEMA for reimbursement after the fact, we can show everything that we have requested, and it's, and it's dated timestamped. It's also good if we are here in Benita requesting something, we can say, this was requested at this time and date, where is it, and it's tracked. Everybody has access to that, and they can look and they can say, yes, it's at this, and we can check here and see where it is in terms of, where it's, how it's moving along in terms of being fulfilled. So that's kinda trying to make a, a 30-page, minus all the attached forms, into kind of a four or five-minute overview of, of this.
Council, what's your pleasure?
I think it's great, it looks very professional, sounds logical.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor and Council, we'll have our plan available online for anyone to review at any time. We are also gonna be emailing out Level 1 and Level 2, if, if any of council was interested in taking the courses through FEMA of Level 1 and 2, so you have the option of doing that. We'll also offer, offer the same opportunity to all our advisory boards as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, item B.
Yes, so I'd like John Dahmer to come forward. At the last council meeting, it was asked that we bring back information regarding elevators, and John's prepared a, a brief presentation on existing regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Is that an Otis elevator?
I believe so. It's an outdated model. Based upon your request, what I've done is kinda put together a list of, of when elevators are required and, and what situations, but we'll start off with the fact that regulations for elevators come from these, different locations, Building Code, Florida Accessibility Code, Florida statutes, and the Elevator Safety Code. So what I'm gonna outline to you tonight is a little bit of all of those, basically getting to the highlights of what is required and when, but unfortunately, it's not all in one simple location to find. Permitting agencies, it is done, permitted and inspected by the Department of Business and Professional Regulation, and is also permitted by your local building department. I think one of the greatest topics of conversation during your last event was for multifamily buildings, and generally it is anything more than three stories, but that could also be required for something that was three-story, it didn't have to be four, it could be three stories, if the vertical distance is greater than 24, 25 feet. And that's basically from the landing area on the first floor to the landing area on the top floor. For non-residential buildings, it's the same standard for three stories, or if it's fewer than 3,000 square feet per floor. Malls, healthcare providers, public transit stations, and airports are exceptions to this rule, so they would be required to provide elevators even if they were less than three Mixed-use buildings, it's, if there is not a resident on the first floor, or if it trips any of the thresholds of any of the other standards that we just outlined. And there is your standards for elevators.
Right. Question? Yeah, Fred?
Don't we have the authority, if we want to do it, to put in this requirement that if it's a two-story, and if it's above two stories in the redevelopment area down, old downtown, that you have to put an elevator in? It's residential.
You, you, for those sections in the Florida Building Code.
I didn't say that.
No, I, I know.
You don't have the authority to do that, I'm asking Derek.
Paint. Mm-hmm. Can you turn the lights up? It's making me sleepy, I'm sorry. I'm not into the question.
Carly, can you handle the question?
Yeah, honestly, honestly, I, you probably could require it, but, you know, the direction at the last meeting was, it seemed to be that it was felt that there could be buildings that were, that were building for availability to the general public that were not accommodating to members of, of disabled groups. And so we had discussed the possibility of adding a, a three-story requirement, at the same time you'd directed us to look at what the ADA and not to go beyond what ADA is. So what, what John's telling you is that the American Disabilities Act, which is incorporated through the Florida Building Code, says three floors or in situations where it's residential or multi-use, where there's a distance that would have to be gapped, basically, so on the beach, it could be two stories, but that distance between the bottom and the higher could be high enough to.
And it's even in addition to that, you have to provide an accessible route to at least some of your, your units, and those can be provided on the first floor, they can be provided on higher floors if you've got an elevator there.
Legally, could we not, I'm not saying we would, but if there were four people on the council that said, I make a motion that in the downtown redevelopment area, any residential development that goes in there, anything more than two stories would require an elevator?
I, I think that you could do so, but you would have to base it on some findings.
Right.
And have a basis for doing it. It wouldn't, and, and then, of course, the other issue you're going to face with, that you've discussed in other elements of your downtown redevelopment, is now you're gonna have an extra floor, or at least an extra item sticking up above that to house the elevator equipment, so now you're gonna have height issues, which is a common issue with the elevator shafts, so.
Most of them that are three or four stories are hydraulic elevators, so you don't have that big penthouse.
What I can tell you is I thought this was going to be a relatively simple assignment when we first got started, because I knew the rules of thumb, and I knew the general standards. What I can tell you is when I started digging into this and started looking to where each of these regulations are, it becomes terribly complicated, and it becomes intertwined with other regulations that are administered by different agencies, are located in different documents, most of which have been passed by the state and not local agencies. Really, the, the greatest chance you have to make.
Non-residential, John, and mixed-use?
It's for everything, sir.
No, no distinction? So in other words?
It's a very complicated.
What we're thinking about kind of in one hand, or I'm thinking about, is the three-story project that went in a few years ago, where it was unaffordable to put elevators in and not needed and not required by state law, because this was gonna be affordable housing. Well, it's not all that affordable, but we're also looking at downtown for mixed-use.
Correct.
So, but make, no distinction is what you're saying.
What I'm saying is, is that really, you're looking at, based on what I've seen, now, this has only been a handful of weeks since we had this last discussion, so I'm not gonna proclaim to be an expert within a handful of weeks. However, based on the research that I've done, you're looking at making a change to the Florida Building Code through your local adoption, which would then have to be approved by the state, because we can't make a change to that building code unless the state approves it. So it can be done, it is, it is a lot more complicated than changing a lot of our zoning standards, so what we, the, the discussion we just had on food trucks, that's a local discussion. Imagine that discussion that then gets approved by the state, because we cannot do that on our own.
Wait, I'll, I'll give the, the short answer to it, John, see, if you get a, you can get a local building code change, you have to base it on a series of findings. If you get that change, and Miami Dade was the first to start this process with their hurricane standards, those can, local changes can occur for a period of time, but then they have to be incorporated to the entire Florida Building Code, or they go away. So what you're really asking for is to change the elevator standards for the state of Florida. That, that's, that's really the lift that you're asking for, and you ask for those local changes, they're gonna look at the local changes, but they're really thinking about what the long-term effect is, and they're not looking to encourage jurisdictions to go off on their own multiple different times.
You can't just dip your toe into this water, you wind up getting up to your neck immediately. And, and I know that it seems like a very simple question and a very simple process, but it took me more than two hours to find out where the requirements were, not to figure out how to understand them, but to find them where they were.
So let's ask it this way. We have a three-story building downtown with no elevators. What does the ADA require? Is it units on the first floor? Do people feel discriminated when they can't get to the second and third floor because they don't wanna live on the first floor? Let me ask all the wrong questions.
If you have, if you have a mixed-use building and you have a unit on the first floor, obviously that addresses the issue. If you start.
What if they don't wanna live on the first floor?
That's not one of the criteria, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to make a couple comments, because I, beyond whether we can or cannot do it, especially in the downtown, I thought when we started to talk about redevelopment there, that there was a lot of discussion that we wanted to have more density down there, that's where we're gonna put the people, gonna put them over some commercial areas, and I, I'm not 100% sure that that's the direction we wanna go anyway, because that was where we're gonna have more affordable housing, because people are gonna live over stores the way they used to in the old, in the old days, that's where we lived, in Newark, where we were, when we were kids. So I'm not sure that's a, a proper direction, if we really wanna rede, really have a vibrant, mixed-used area down there anyway, so.
Well, and we also need to keep in mind that we're.
I think one of, just to follow up, I think one of the problems that we have with the existing one is that it, that the quality there is not what we had hoped it would be. But I'm not sure that's related to elevators, because if it were really like over the, the commercial area in the downtown area, there would be certain quality there, so maybe, I don't know, we can't require that they don't use, like, wood framing in there, can't we? That's not in the Florida Building Code either, right?
You do have that option, there's different standards if you decide.
We could say we want, you know, concrete framing or something, or those, but I think that that's not totally related to the fact that there are elevators in there or not elevators in there. You could just look at Manhattan, where you have, you know, brownstones, you know, people walk up three flights there, and those are not poorly designed nor made, even in the renovations, so. I would be careful before we put that in the downtown area, because I think we have a different nature down there, and I think we wanna have density down there.
And this, this is not a prohibition that says that elevators cannot be installed, this is the minimum standards of when they must be installed.
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody wanted to install an elevator, they would not, we would not prevent them from doing it. It's simply, we're looking at areas where would one be required. So if somebody wanted to provide an elevator in a building that did not trip any of these thresholds, it would still be acceptable.
Well, that's the same thing as you, we'd like to see not wood-stick framing on three-story buildings, but the code provides for that, so that's the cheapest way for them to do it. They sprinkle it and go up three stories with.
We have bonus density programs.
Right.
You could award bonus density for things like upgraded accessibility standards.
So maybe we could tie the elevators to that, what might work a lot better than what we're talking about, right?
Going the traditional routes really do make me nervous, simply because it is, it is not a simple process, nor is it going to be easy to complete, even for the, the most minor change.
So what would that process look like, Derek, in a nutshell?
Well, you have, you have a, you have a process already that allows you to grant bonus density for certain improvements, public improvements. If you were to find that adding accessibility where accessibility is not required, maybe in mixed-use, maybe in strictly residential or affordable housing, which is, you could, you could grant additional densities to properties that. you could grant additional densities to properties that, that provided those accessibility standards, gave elevators where they didn't have to. The que, the question would become, now when you're looking at your form-based code and all the other things, how is that, what's the knock-on effects? What's the domino effect of those changes? Is it, is it something beyond what you're anticipating or are you? So, I think there's ways to incentivize it. Maybe that's the way to go. You'd also want to make sure that if you were going to incentivize it, so for instance, if developers building to ADA, you make sure that, just like when you go into hotels that have ADA-accessible, you know, units and things like that, you may want to incentivize other types of things. So, I don't know if this is something you're looking at as a broader issue or it's just the elevators.
Counsel, what's your pleasure at this point? Or John, do you have more information?
No, sir, it's just you look at some of those, some of those recent projects, you look at really those being three-story buildings, one-third of those units are accessible, it's just the upper stories that are not accessible, the second, third floor. So, in numbers-wise, they definitely do meet the minimum standards and they're actually exceeding them. It's just they're all located on the first floor and they're not located in any of the higher floors.
On the Mosaic property, the front building is, is that mixed use? Because I, I know originally they set apartments above the businesses.
Yes.
Is there an elevator in that or is it because they provide other rooms in other buildings on the property, they don't have to have it?
I don't remember seeing an elevator in that door.
Yeah, I didn't think I saw one either, but in your presentation it said mixed use, so you have to have it.
And it was done as, but as an overall project, they have enough units that are provided throughout the site itself.
Is, is that how it's worded as a percentage thing or, like, say, say I was building a mixed-use thing and, but I didn't want an elevator, I was, it can either be two, two or maybe three stories. If I just had one livable unit on the first floor, would that get me out of having to put an elevator in?
I think you need more than, depends on how many units are you doing.
Well, that's why I was wondering if it was a percentage thing or if it was just.
It's a percentage.
You just have, yeah, and the percent, I don't even know the, I'm not exactly sure the number. So, we say percentage, but I'm not sure what that standard is. So, as long as you've got that, that number provided, then you meet the, the standard.
Yeah. I just know as far as apartments go, they generally build them three stories because they don't want to put in elevators, you know, both the cost up front and the maintenance on them. And the building becomes more expensive to build because as they normally do it, you know, they'll have a shared like hallway with the three landings, and they'll typically like four apartments off of each of those landings. Where if you're doing an elevator, you're going to want that to service the whole building. So, now you either have a hallway down the center of the building or on the outside of the building.
But you've got a single aisle way that connects all of the units.
Exactly. So, I mean, I, I understand why they don't want to put elevators in a lot of these apartment buildings because it does bring up the cost, so.
Is this something that, that we need to pursue the, the idea of a bonus density provision or is this something that we're looking to?
Well, I, I mean, I, look, I think the path of least resistance to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I won't even add to that. Say it that way. So, would that be what you suggested, Derek?
Path of least resistance to do nothing, but.
Understood. But we're looking at a mixed-use project.
I think if.
Coming down the pike line here.
Going, going down the path that, that Councilman Corumba laid out, which was if you were really looking to encourage mixed use the way that it had been traditionally in classical downtown, with commercial on the first floor.
As long as you're not elderly or handicapped.
Right. Then they wouldn't be able to without an elevator. So, I think maybe the, the way to do that is through bonus density.
Well, it sounds like they can't do it because like on a smaller property, if I wanted to build a mixed use, I can't build it unless I put an elevator in. Or unless I put residential on the first floor, but part of our mixed use is we're trying, we're saying no residential on the first floor. We won't, we only want businesses on the first floor, so it's going to have to have an elevator then.
We have a couple of conversations coming up with DPZ. We could, we could run the idea of an elevator standard by them to see how, how it plays into their form-based code and what we.
Would that person have to? If you have two stories and commercial on the first and then apartments on the second, you'd have to put in an elevator by law?
When you have a mixed-use building, basically trips.
Oh, but it has to be a certain size. It has to be at least 3,000.
It just said mixed use, I thought.
No, I think there's a.
3,000.
Okay, well, for multifamily, it's greater than three stories, or if you look at the bottom point, or when residential units are not provided on the first floor.
But.
Two stories.
Stories and, and the, and the commercials on the first floor, the residential is on the second floor.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah, the 3,000 was a non-residential.
Correct.
But with mixed use, if you, you have to have an elevator. No way around it.
Or inaccessible route. What about a ramp?
Yes, if the building exceeds any of the, the non-residential thresholds or when residential units are not provided on the first floor.
You could have a ramp.
So, any building where, where we do require resid, commercial on the first floor would have a, an elevator is what you're saying? And that's what we have designed it already?
If you.
So, we don't need this. We already are doing it.
Or if somebody has it on the first floor, a ramp could be provided, but the, the slope and the ramp is so gradual that it would be prohibitive based upon.
I, I have another question. Do the required generators?
For multifamily or for elevators? I do not know that answer.
The.
Fred.
The point, there's a point here, and that is that because we are requiring certain areas to be mixed-use, commercial on the bottom and other, we're forcing those people to put in an elevator, which is going to make the apartment rent higher versus a guy that builds apartments all the way to the ground.
Well, we were told you were going to have cheap rent downtown before, and that didn't end up working.
We don't.
And we don't.
And that other big.
And we have stick frames and no elevators.
That other big batch of apartments that's behind Starbucks is same deal. It's wood frame, three, three stories.
So, the path of least resistance that involves a deep dive is where my head's at because I don't believe this is correct.
I think we got two really good attorneys. We got Derek and we have Thariak. Let them.
You didn't call these three.
Let them.
You're going to jump ahead on this one.
Let them, let them work on this and come up with a couple innovative solutions.
I, I think I'm, what I'm looking for is still just more direction exactly what you're looking to do because I, I think there's a lot of instances where this is going to be already included. If, if we're talking about, if we're only realizing now that commercial on the first floor and residential on the second and third floor is going to require an elevator, which is going to raise the rents, I mean, that's an assumption we're making. It could be that the property owner is making money off the commercial and justifying the cost of the, of the elevator. And we want to look at incentives to incentivize them further, then that's something we need to look at. But I don't want to, I don't want to jump to that conclusion just yet. I think, I think what I'm looking for is you want elevators in three, four, three-story buildings.
I want options for people and builders.
I think, I think as well as we have that requirement in certain T-sections of the code, so let us bring back a map so you can fully understand where that requirement is of mixed-use development on the second floor, so we understand what the requirement is as well.
And I'll just be very clear. We went through this charade five years ago and we sold a bill of goods. I don't want that to happen again. It's really that simple.
Almost a bait and switch.
Yep. And that doesn't make the solution easy, but it frames where my head's at.
You're, you're aiming for affordable housing or some kind of reasonable.
Nobody in their right mind is looking at what we're doing downtown as affordable housing. We did it before.
I don't understand. What's your goal? I don't.
My goal is to allow handicap people to live downtown, elderly people to live downtown if they can't walk up three flights of stairs. That's all.
All right. So, we, we don't worry if it adds cost?
I'm not worried about it.
Okay.
I'm worried about sit, providing a service that certain citizens need.
Okay. Well, that makes it easy though, really.
I think I like Arlene's idea. Bring us back a map specific and what are, what are the existing regulations and.
But clarify, I mean, that's interesting that they would have to have an elevator in all, anyway. If that is the case, then we don't need bonus density.
Well, I think what we need to do is clarify the sections of the form-based that would require the mixed use, that the, there is no residential on the first floor because that's, and if John can verify through the building code that that's complete, that that would require the elevator, then we can look at where that is. And then you might want to look at other T3, T2, you know, where, where other building types are permitted. So, if it's more than one story, where you want to extend that opportunity for bonus density if you want to encourage the elevators.
That makes sense.
Yep.
What defines residential use? Like if I own a commercial, I, it's my building, and I put a little apartment in the back for myself, but I never live there, but I say I do and I get my mail there, what, is that, I don't need an elevator?
It's, okay, well, if you remember the first slide, there are four locations for elevator standards. And what I have outlined for you is basically the high watermark for all of them or the low watermark, I guess it depends on how you look at it. So, when you're looking at the unit, it needs to be how it's going to be permitted as a unit, whether it's going to be available for either sale or for lease. If I just throw a bedroom and a bathroom on the back of a commercial building, no, ma'am, that's not really.
Kitchen.
But that's not really what's going to be, make, turn the trick on this particular application. So, a lot of these things come with an if this, then that type of situation. A lot of these tr, regulations, especially when it comes to the accessibility code, if an elevator is required, these standards come into play. If you're going to be providing this type of, of unit in this location, then these standards will apply. I know that this was just four slides, but this was about eight hours of research in terms of, in conversations with building official who had to go back and find all of these standards themselves because he was like me, he knew what the general rules were, but when you find them and you look to see where exactly they're, they're located, it's not intuitive. So, that's why some of these questions, well, as it required now, it's easier, and I know that that's not the purpose of this exercise, but it's easier if a building plan comes in for review to say whether it is or whether it's not because you have standards in front, or you have specifics in front of you that you can address and say, yes, it is. General questions are much more difficult, simply because you need those specifics to answer the questions. And that's why, I'm sorry that some of these answers are not rolling off my tongue, but that's why. But in terms of the direction, we can work with the choose-your-own-adventure scenarios with this goal in mind.
Counsel, we're good for now?
That's good.
Okay, thank you. Item C, Arlene.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel. At the February 5th meeting, it was the direction of counsel to provide some notification to the Wonder Gardens of our interest in looking at the, the overall lease agreement that you have. And as a reminder, back in December, the city council awarded the letter of interest to the Everglades Wonder Gardens. We've been continuing to review documents that have been provided to us, and it, and we also were encouraged to communicate with CBRE under our existing contract to understand current rental rates in downtown and what would be appropriate square footage-wise. At this point, we would like to ask for a member of council to volunteer to sit at the negotiation table with us so that we can go over those recommended rates. Some of the things we also may want to consider is if you would like us to look at this as a holistic lease, including all of the property, or if you want to keep the lease individual to the, the cafe area. And then also consideration of an annual escalator clause. That was something that CBRE brought to our attention. And apply any tenant improvements to the Wonder Gardens. We want to have a conversation about the required ADA amendments.
Required what?
The required ADA improvements that have to be made to, because we are the underlying property owner.
No elevator. Only one floor.
Single story, right? So, we're all set.
But ultimately, our risk management folks have made it very clear that if there is an ADA impediment, it is the responsibility of the property owner, which is the city. So, we want to discuss that we know that the Wonder Gardens will most likely have improvements they want to make on the building themselves. We want to have a discussion on whether we want to continue with our CIP to put those in or if we want to work in partnership with them, or whether or not you are interested in providing a, you know, a rent reduction based on them completing those improvements. So, at this point, what we're asking for is a member of council to volunteer to sit across the table with us during the discussions.
I'll volunteer.
I was going to say, whatever you recommend. Counsel?
I'll volunteer also. What do you want to do?
Laura, you brought it up, so.
Okay.
Okay. Would I like to nominate Laura Carr?
Well, I'd like to go over all those things that you just said to get a sense of the council, you know, what, what we want to do to give direction to Laura. So, could you do it, could you do it one at a time or something?
Absolutely.
So, so first off, what we want to, what we want to discuss as well is we did get some, some rental rates in some ranges, so that's, that would be rental rates of square footage. But would you like to consider this as a holistic look, including the current lease agreement you have for the Wonder Gardens and the cafe, or would you like to separate the two issues?
Well, can I just interject that we take this up in pieces? So, because first, I want to see what Derek has to say about something like that or Carly, you know, whoever's convenient to sort of answer it. And we have a six-month period, so we can sort of flush out issues from, from both parties, and then, you know, you can present it back to council. I mean, there's not going to be any decisions being made in our first meeting, so we can then flush out what it is we need to discuss and, and move from there. That's at least what I would suggest, instead of right now going over all of these points when we're just going to reiterate them, you know, for the next six months.
Well, the six months relates to the lease. The underlying land lease or the property lease, right?
Correct.
But, but what we're talking about now is, is discussing a lease for the building itself?
Correct.
All right, so that's more timely. Is that correct or not?
Correct. They are interested in moving forward with them.
All right, so I, I don't.
Okay, well, be separate.
If, if you want to do it separately, then we could postpone the underlying thing for six months. That would mean, that would mean, that would mean that it wouldn't be hol, holistic.
I think the intent was, was to, to not look at these two things separately. The original agreement with Wonder Gardens, including all the money the city put into it, contemplated revisiting the, the rental issue when they became successful. We don't really know what the, what, where they are as far as their success. We do know that they're interested in expanding into the, into the new space, and we're talking about setting the rent pricing for that space. Maybe we should really just be looking at it all together at the same time. That's, that, that's the issue of whether do we want to have those conversations now.
I think that makes the most sense for the city.
But, but how can you do it if the lease isn't up for six months?
Well, having.
How do you do that holistically because they need, they need some answer on the lease on the building?
Doesn't the lease say that we have to give them six months notice? We could actually.
We're, we're not talking about changing the lease on the main building right now. We're talking about starting negotiations. Otherwise, we're going to get probably to a situation where at the end of that six months, we're, we're going to be like we are with most of our leases, extending them.
So, this discussion could say that in six months, we're going to change that lease payment, plus this is the, what we would like to have for the lease on the building. That's what we're going to be talking about.
It could be, but really it's just to start talking about what their, what their plans are for the small space and, and then incorporating that for everything. So, we just get a better idea of what, what their plans are.
If, if both parties were in agreement, we could bring it back sooner, so you'd have a holistic agreement sooner if everyone was in agreement.
There's, there's nothing to say that we wouldn't talk about a lease payment for the new space now and then start building what we're going to do in six months or a year based on what we know for their exact plans. So, I think the idea is to ask, to have someone on the council who's interested and, and can relay those desires back to the rest of the council when we get back to the point of actually coming forth or something. And why we chose this, what were the considerations, rather than simply just a market-based approach. This is the rent you should pay for this much space. Here it is. I know that's a consideration, but we're not giving that same consideration to the to the larger building, or the larger building either. So, I think having, being able to have the dialogue is the way we want to go.
So, do we need a vote?
We need a nomination.
Well, there's, I nominated...
We need a victim.
I nominated Councilwoman Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second? Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, move, we closed nominations and, um, first and a second on Laura Carr. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Okay, where are we going?
Yes. Mayor and Counsel, as you recall, we've been going over the city-owned properties in the downtown. Uh, we have, the, uh, city attorney and myself have received a correspondence from an, an interested party in one of those parcels. That is, we identified it as parcel number 22. We went through this, but this is actually Horn Avenue. If you recall, um, this is adjacent to the Benita Springs Elementary School. We have, at a staff level, contacted the school board and we have, it has been indicated that the, uh, school, the elementary school does use that for overflow parking unofficially. So, at this point, we'd like some direction from counsel. Would you like us to offer the property to the school board as a potential first right of refusal? And if so, at that point, then if that were to not be their interest, did you want to move forward to declare this as a surplus property? So, that's why we're looking for some direction from counsel.
I like that idea. I think that the, that the Lee County School Board should have first right of refusal since they are using it as a parking lot.
At, at whatever rate we get from somebody that is interested.
Right, correct. And, and under our existing contract with CBRE, no additional costs, they should be able to provide us a, a market value for it.
I move to, that we do that, that we contact them to get a price, that we offer the first refusal and then list it.
Okay, so what, what I ask to do then is to go ahead and agree that the council will declare this property surplus and then we'll go through that.
Okay.
We'll reach out to the school board first.
And on that first right of refusal, because you're dealing with a board and a superintendent, you're going to have to give some reasonable length of time from when you notify them to...
Yeah, about six days.
They'll never make it.
So, I think we would be looking for a motion to declare it a surplus and then the process would be to notify...
Make a motion to make it surplus.
There's been a motion and a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, or Mayor and coun, yes, Arlene, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I would ask that our city clerk just give an update on the upcoming plans for the election, the canvassing schedule, as well as the swearing-in ceremony, so that everyone's aware of the schedule going forward, so...
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. The date of the certification for our March 17th special election will be Friday, March 27th. Additionally, the county canvassing board for the presidential preference primary election, the March 17th election, will be comprised of three members, including Judge Tara Patlock, John Manning, county commissioner, and Tommy Doyle supervisor. And Judge James Adams will be at council's April 1st meeting to perform the swearing-in ceremony for the newly-elected, uh, council members.
And, and our city clerk will be present on Tuesday evening at the supervisor elections as well.
Counsel, any questions or more information needed? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, and you're all set? Okay, Mayor and counsel member items, Amy Karamba.
Uh, none for me.
Okay, Laura?
Uh, yes, the Historic Preservation Board has grant money available, so if anyone has a home that needs, that is qualified as a historic home, that needs repairs or uh, uh, some rehabilitation, please contact the city. And we also have two vacancies on the Historic Preservation Board and it meets on Thursday evenings at 5:30 and it's the thir, third Thursday or the fourth Thursday?
The last Thursday.
Last Thursday. Thank you, Carly. The last Thursday of the month at, here in City Hall. So, please think about it. Fun evening.
Thank you. Mike?
I'm good, thanks.
Fred?
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, I have something to read. I'd like to provide some information regarding coronavirus 19. Um, as you may know, Governor DeSantis issued Executive Order 20-51 declaring a public health emergency for the state of Florida following health officials' learning of two presumptive positive cases of COVID-19, coronavirus 19. The Florida Department of Health, DOH, has announced that the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, is now confer, has now confirmed two cases of 2019 coronavirus COVID-19 in Florida, as well as one presumptive positive case. In addition, the department has reported 16 individual test results that are pending. Despite these three cases, DOH strongly maintains the risk of Florida to Florida public remains low. Here in Benita Springs, we are in touch with the Florida Department of Health and will be monitoring their updates and sharing resource information with our community. You can visit the city website to find contact information for local resources to ensure that you know where to look for news and updates. The city's website is www.cityofbenitasprings.org. This is a fluid situation and we are committed to sharing information as it is made available to us. And now I'd like to ask, Arlene, share some additional information, please.
Yes, Mayor. Um, as the mayor mentioned, we are in touch with the Florida Department of Health, as well as Chief DeWitt with the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District. And we are sharing appropriate resources and information on our city media outlets. We will have our, the telephone numbers and website addresses listed for the Florida Department of Health, the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, as well as the Lee County Health Department. Florida Department of Health remains our best and most up-to-date resource for information and guidance regarding the coronavirus 19 in our state. And for any questions, they have a hotline set up, so please call COVID hyphen 19 and for, and that is 1-866-779-6121. Again, we'll have this information on all of our media outlets, our front desk office, and we'll also have this available information and phone numbers to anyone who calls the City Hall for more information. But again, monitoring the, we're continued to monitor as we provide, we're provided with updates, we will continue to provide that to the public.
Very unfortunate situation, but, um, we're on top of it for now. Counsel, anything else? Okay, motion to approve the minutes of February 19th?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the minutes of February 19th, 2020. Been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
All right, public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak? Yes, sir. You've been patient this evening, good for you. Thanks for being with us.
Anyway, uh, my name is Bill Douglas. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Everglades Wonder Gardens and I'm here to express our thanks and appreciation to the council and to the staff for the many outreaches. We're having fantastic year.